And you might not see it right now. It looks like a bunch of asphalt, but what we're hoping to do is turn this area by the beginning of this school year into our new and improved and larger school garden. We've got a lot of green thumbs in the community and it can be active and participating and teaching our kids on their own with that. So getting the community back onto campus after the pandemic.
The Parent Partnership Grant provides Cedar Lane an opportunity to continue our focus on improving literacy skills for our students. In addition to funding our PBIS initiative, but the biggest change that we're going to see next year is our site coordinator will be here collaborating with us and with our parents to establish and improve events for parents in order to support their needs and to support their collaboration here with us at Cedar Lane Elementary.
One exciting aspect of what Lenders is doing with the CCSPP money is what's called a AAA program, Academic Adult Advisors for all incoming freshmen. Each advisor will have a caseload of 20 students to monitor, assist, and provide support throughout their freshman year.
Hi, I'm Michelle Higgins and I'm the principal at Dobbin's Elementary and Yuba Feather Elementary. At each of my schools, we were granted the Community Schools Grant. At Dobbin's, we're planning on doing project-based learning with our upper grades and a whole school garden. At Yuba Feather, we're hoping to include more adult education classes, counseling services, and wellness programs. So these programs will help our community by providing food resources for our students and families as well as additional educational services.
Our new parent university is one element of this effort that we were excited to launch this spring. We held monthly classes at the district office and a Stanford University vaping education class at McKinney and Yuba Gardens. These classes drew interest from over 40 enthusiastic and engaged parents. We're looking forward to the fall when we'll have a full calendar of offerings throughout the school year. One grateful parent offered this feedback from the conscious discipline class. She said, "I'm so grateful that the district is doing this. Our family really needs it."
Even prior to receiving Community Schools grant funding, Marysville Joint Unified has implemented many programs and practices that align with the California Community Schools vision.
Over the next five years, these funds will help us become well-established in the practice of engaging our families and community partners in supporting the success of our students so that we can sustain these practices beyond the life of the grant.
Thank you for supporting Marysville Joint Unified Community Schools.
And I think you'll see a lot more Community Schools implementation and action this next year. We have all of our site coordinators at all of the school sites and you'll see collaboration, coalition building really to help bring these supports in for students.
Well, I am just so excited to see the progress that even in the short time we've had the money available, the enthusiasm of the schools that have gotten the awards. It's just too bad not all the schools got an award.
That is true.
But I'm hoping that the examples that these schools that did give the funding will help other schools to initiate some of the same kinds of programs. So the gardening thing is huge in this community. And I think just about every school should have something going on with a garden somewhere. But that's like the tip of the iceberg for what the community is needing. But I just think you guys have really hit the ground running with the excitement that you're seeing on these different schools. Are there any questions from the board? Thank you very much for a very nice presentation.
Thank you very much.
Now we're moving into updates by department administrative services. Brian?
I don't have a whole lot tonight, other than to say that the end of school is always a busy time, especially in the field of technology. And with all of that, not only do we get to end one school year, but we get to start summer school at the same time. And so it's always a bit of a challenge. Just want to give props to the staff and the technology department that's been out there working hard to make sure that everything's working properly and getting everyone finalizing one year and starting summer at the same time. So, thank you.
Are there any questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian, and your staff. Business Services, Jennifer?
Thank you. Good evening. So tonight, my update is Nutrition Services. They've been providing meals to all of our students attending summer school and extended school year. They're also feeding the five locations for summer meals for kids ages 18 and under. Those locations are Cedar Lane, Edgewater, Kynock, Lynnhurst, and at the Lynnhurst Memorial Park. And then there's more information on their MJUSD Nutrition website. And then also new this year, they have been approved by the state to serve our rural communities with the multi-day meal distribution and a parent pickup option. And that was kicked off yesterday with 94 kids in the foothill area at four distribution locations. And the next distribution dates are Monday, June 17th, June 24th, and July 1st. And parents can visit the MJUSD Nutrition website for more locations and distribution times. And there's also some flyers here for anybody who's interested. So, thank you.
Are there any questions for Jennifer? Well, thank you, Jennifer. I know you've been working hard. Thank you and your staff. Education Services, Jay?
Yes, sir. We have the May professional development overview displayed for you. And May is one of our lightest months with respect to staff members pursuing opportunities to improve their craft on both the certificated and classified side. The fact that we have 111 altogether and just about every school represented tells me again, just the level of commitment that teachers and classified staff members have during arguably one of the busiest times of the year. I look forward to June. I don't want to spill the beans just yet, but we have had a tremendous participation in June. For example, we had 137 teachers sign up for the Science of Reading, which is a pretty good commitment for the K-2. That's 15 hours of professional development that they will be digging into. Incidentally, it's not going to surprise me that third grade happens to be one of the grade levels that looks to be on the upswing with respect to academic achievement via CASP. Now, the scores are still, they're still not official and we still have some scoring to do, but nonetheless, it looks like third grade is going to bode well for our district. And that just goes to show efforts around the literacy plan. I also just want to take a moment to thank you, Mr. Davis, members of the board, for your support over these last two years. I want to thank Dr. Israni for the opportunity to come and join your team in Marysville. I want to thank my colleagues on cabinet. I want to thank the teaching staff and the classified staff. And I want to give a quick shout out to my ed services team. You have been phenomenal. It's a new team that came together just last year. I just want you to know that you have my unyielding support, my gratitude. I know that your efforts often go unnoticed or they're quiet in the background, but just know that your efforts and services make a tremendous difference to this district. So thank you to my team and thank you to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Jay? Thank you, Jay, for everything you've done for us and for your outstanding staff. Personnel Services? Thank you. Well, we'd like to welcome Jordan. He's our new personnel person and just hope that you're settled in. It's a busy time of year. Thank you very much. Dr. Israni?
Thank you. I'd like to start off by saying, two years in a row, I've received feedback from you and I appreciate it. I do want to not marginalize the fact that based underlying the comments of my performance, cannot be denied the fact how hard you're working. What I see when I go to your schools, what I see when I go to your classrooms, and when I see in the trenches every single day, what I see in your performances, what I see in your data. So I want to sit here and say thank you for what you do and thank you for always holding me to a place where I think my performance just needs to get better. And I want to thank you for your feedback. On that note, I do want to say great graduation for all the high schools. What a tremendous job that was. I also want to say great concerts at the end of the year, the art shows at Lynnhurst, at Yuba Gardens was absolutely astounding, wasn't it? The music concerts that I attended, beautiful. And then most importantly, the play at Yuba Gardens, that was just so cute. In the gym, they had a drama play that I had to cover three events that day. So I was running back and forth and it was wonderful. I do want to give a great shout out to our facilities and our people out there. All the projects that we have committed to do for you and for our children are all on schedule, ahead of schedule and within budget. Thank you, Jennifer and your team, for the excellent job that you're doing to make sure teaching and learning becomes a focus of the school district and stays that way. I also want to thank our custodial staff and our technology staff that have spent so many hours going from school to school to make sure that our schools are going to be clean for next year, but most importantly, technology and all devices will be working well. At the end of it, I do want to end with some really good news. You heard Jordan talk about the hiring. We had 85 openings of certificated teachers. We filled 65 already. The openings that are available are areas of special ed. We filled all the county positions. There's just some of the STC positions that are left to fill. Psychologists and such are in that number of 20, I believe. So a certificated, 20 more left. Fabulous hiring. Very, very proud of that. I would like to welcome to the leadership team, Ashley Vettie as a new executive director for HR. Executive Director Amy Stratton, both of you deserve this. Thank you for what you're doing. As we go into the budgeting conversation, I do want you to know that we have already started cutting positions at the district office. And so we've reduced almost 4.6 administrative positions at the district this summer. Based on the other part is we've been talking to Chico State and SAC State. And what is astounding is that they're bringing to us resources to start their administrative pipeline. For those of you who are sitting there, maybe you don't want to be a superintendent ever, but if you're ever interested to be a principal or an assistant principal, the pipeline to create administrative is coming to our district. We also, SAC State is coming to us to create a hub where they'll have a counselor to help our community and our students get four-year counseling moving forward. I also want to say thank you to Jay Trahir for a wonderful two years. Thank you, Jay. You'll be missed. Enjoy your safari. That's where he's going next. Yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a great summer.
Any questions for the superintendent? Now we're at 10.1, approve. Approval of the May 14, 2024 regular board meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Yang. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose?
Abstained.
Abstained. One abstention from Gary Crittle. Oh, there's two. The two Crittles. Who knew? Motion pass. Measure passes. The minutes are approved. 10.2, approved. Approval of the revised March 14, 2024 Special Board Meeting Minutes. Can we have an explanation of why we're having to amend those? Does anybody know that?
I wish Anna Korea was here to give that answer. But...
Was it a typo?
There was a typo. Do you know, Jordan, what that was? I know that Jessica was handling it. Yes, yes, yes. There was a typo of a particular employee number.
I was trying to remember why we were having to amend them. I'm sorry I have surprise with that question. Are there any other questions or additions to those minutes? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Allison Hacey. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Yang. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The March 14? It's been a while since we were at March 14. Motion carries. Now we have 10.3, approval of the consent agenda items. Are there any consent agenda items that the board would like more discussion on? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Allison Hacey. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're at new business. It's 19.1. Ratify the Teacher Residency Implementation and Expansion Grant for the 4/24/23 through... No, that's new business.
18.1.
Okay. It's a 4/24/23 through June 3, 2026. Amy, help us. We need help.
We're on 18.1, not 19.1.
Okay.
Which is the new business for Educational Services, the LCAP presentation. At the bottom of page four. Oh, and page...
Sorry about that. I jumped. Trying not to do that. Presentation and Public Hearing for the Local Control and Accountability Plan, LCAP, and the LCFF Budget Overview for Parents Annual Update for the Marysville Joint Unified School District for the 2024/25 School Year. Sorry about that, Amy.
Oh, no worries. So tonight is the presentation of the LCAP. We'll have a video here in a moment. And then at our next board meeting in June will be the approval of the LCAP.
Thank you.
...hear information on the Marysville Joint Unified School. Good evening, trustees, superintendent Israni, members of the cabinet, members of the audience. I'm Amy Stratton, Director of Curriculum Assessment and Accountability. Tonight you will hear information on the Marysville Joint Unified School District LCAP for the 24/25 School Year. MJUSD employs over 1,300 people, supports students who live in over 75 square miles, and educates just over 10,000 school-aged students in grades CK through 12, with approximately 500 in the preschool program. MCAA is the district's explosive charter and, as required by law, will submit their own LCAP. The 23/24 demographic data indicates approximately 49% of our students are Hispanic, 29% are white, 9% are Asian, 18% are English learners, 14% are in special programs, 4% are identified homeless, and 0.7% are foster youth. 68% of our students are socioeconomically disadvantaged and 71% are unduplicated, which means they are either EL, foster youth, or socioeconomically disadvantaged. The Local Control and Accountability Plan is the district's plan about the educational priorities and budgetary spending. July 2013, Governor Jerry Brown signed a new school funding model into law. This funding model is known as the Local Control Funding Formula, or LCFF. And it requires school districts to develop an LCAP that guides the priorities and the budget development process. The LCFF consists of supplemental concentration funds. Details of this funding formula will be provided in the budget presentation tonight. The eight priorities are grouped under three overarching focus areas: conditions of learning, engagement, and student outcomes. In the LCAP document, you will notice that we will list the priority areas 1 through 8 under each of the goals. Goal 1 addresses academic performance of our students. Goal 2 addresses the physical and emotional safety needs. Goal 3 addresses college and career. Goal 4 addresses supports for English learners. Goal 5 addresses home-to-school communication. And Goal 6 addresses improved access and inclusion opportunities for special education. A new funding source is available for schools who qualify. The Equity Multiplier Funds are for schools who have a high non-stability rate, which means that these schools experience a large number of students who are enrolled in more than one school during the school year, and they have to have a high low socioeconomic percentage. The LCAP requires districts to identify successful practices during the current year to document progress of last year's LCAP goals. Here are a few highlights for you to review. Now let's review the budget overview for parents. The LCFF funds school districts to serve high-need students, specifically unduplicated student groups. The LCAP written is to show the portion of the LCFF funds that are being used for improved and increased services for the unduplicated student groups. This slide is for reference only and shows how the LCFF funds are calculated. This chart compares what we budgeted last year in the LCAP for actions and services that contribute to increasing or improving services for high-need students with what we estimate to have spent. We budgeted $38.8 million for planned actions to increase improved services for high-need students, and we estimated to have spent $34.6 million. The total revenue projected for MJUSD is about $179.6 million, of which $133.7 million is Local Control Funding Formula, or LCFF. $28.8 million are other state funds. $8.8 million are local funds. $8.1 million are federal funds. Of the $133.7 million in LCFF funds, $27 million is generated based on the enrollment of our high-need students. In the 24/25 LCAP, LCFF revenue allocated for unduplicated students is $27.4 million, whereas the budgeted expenditures is $29.1 million. This chart provides a quick summary of how much MJUSD plans to spend in 24/25. It shows how much of the total is tied to planned actions and services in the LCAP. MJUSD plans to spend $186.1 million for general fund expenditures. $34 million is tied to actions and services in the LCAP, and $152 million is not included in the LCAP. The budgeted expenditures not included in the LCAP will be used for operational expenditures such as base salaries and benefits, utilities, special education, and routine maintenance. Now let's look at the goals and actions in more detail. LCAP Goal 1, Improve Academic Performance. This goal addresses state priorities 1, 2, 4, 5, 7, and 8, and strategic plans Goal 1 and 2. $11.7 million is budgeted with $11.6 million contributing. Significant changes in the budget and expenditures were the result of removing non-contributing actions, purchasing a three-year Lexia contract, including the existing staff from Middle College, and reduction of the LCAP site allocation funds. LCAP Goal 2, Create an Environment That Addresses Physical, Emotional, and Safety. This goal addresses state priorities 1, 5, and 6, and strategic plans Goal 2 and 4. $11.6 is budgeted with $10.5 contributing. The significant changes in the budget and expenditure were the result of removing non-contributing actions and a decrease in facilities allocation. Another note for this goal is a word change from music to VAPA, or Visual Performing Arts. Due to this supplant requirement in Prop 28, this change is necessary to ensure that all the arts in the district flourish. All efforts will be made to ensure that the funding sources from music program remain intact and successfully be incorporated into the funding requirements of Prop 28. LCAP Goal 3, Prepare Students for College and Career. This goal addresses state priorities 4, 5, and 7, and strategic plan goals 1 and 2. $3.5 million is budgeted and $3.5 million is contributing. The significant changes in budget and expenditures were the result of removing non-contributing actions, the realignment of college and career sections such as APECTE credit recovery, and we moved EL sections from Goal 4 into this action, as well as adding the existing staffing of college and career. LCAP Goal 4, Build a System of Supports for English Learners. This goal addresses state priorities 4 and 7, strategic plans Goal 1 and 2. $990,000 is budgeted with $870,000 contributing. The significant changes in budget and expenditures were the result of removing the non-contributing actions, including the removal of EL curriculum from the LCAP and the realignment of ELD sections into Goal 3. LCAP Goal 5, Improve Meaningful School-to-Home Relationships. This goal addresses state priorities 3, 5, 6, and 8, and strategic plans Goal 2 and 3. $2.5 million is budgeting, $2.5 million is contributing. The significant changes in budget and expenditures were the result of removing non-contributing actions and increased costs for our outreach consultants. LCAP Goal 6, Improve Access and Inclusion Opportunities for Special Education. This goal addresses state priorities 1, 2, 4, 5, 7, and 8, and strategic plans Goal 1 and 2. $2.6 million is budgeted and $0 is contributing. This goal supports mandated actions for special education and does not meet the requirements for contributing actions. The significant changes in budget expenditures were the result of removing the non-contributing actions and leaving only transportation in this goal. LCAP Goal 7 is a new goal. This goal is for equity multiplier schools. This goal will improve overall support and services for the whole child to improve educational access and achievement. This goal addresses state priorities 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, as well as strategic plans Goal 1 and 2. $917,000 is budgeted, $0 is contributing. This school does not meet the requirements for contributing actions. This is a new funding source for our three equity multiplier sites. Those sites are South Lynnhurst, Dobbin's Elementary, and Abraham Lincoln School. As part of the Every Student Succeeds Act, schools that are identified as needing comprehensive supports and improvement, or CSI, have some additional reporting requirements that must be addressed in the LCAP, including the identification of the schools in CSI and discuss how the schools will be supported. MJUSD has three sites in CSI, Cedar Lane Elementary, Linda School, and Marysville High School. MJUSD will work alongside these sites during the school year and provide ongoing data monitoring in academics, suspension rates, graduation rates, and absenteeism. MJUSD is obligated to meet a total of 26.165% of increased and improved services. This percentage includes the carryover funding not spent in the 23/24 School Year. MJUSD receives $133.7 million in LCFF funds, of which $27 million is generated for unduplicated student counts. With a total of $34 million in the LCAP expenditures, $29.1 million is contributing to improved services for unduplicated students, resulting in MJUSD meeting our obligation of 26.165% of increased and improved services. This slide shows how our funding has changed from the 23/24 School Year to the 24/25 School Year. You will notice that our LCFF funding has increased. This is a result of the program transfer and an expected increase in student enrollment. You will also see that a decrease in our supplemental concentration funding. This is a result of a decrease in our unduplicated student percentage. I would like to thank the board and the community for taking time to listen to the presentation. A special thanks to participating members who have provided guidance and feedback to the development of the LCAP through multiple meetings and community forums. If you have any questions on the LCAP, a link will be available on the district website. The board will adopt the document at the next meeting on June 25th, after which it will be submitted to the Yuba County Office of Education and the California Department of Education before June 30th.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any questions for the board?
Yes. I think it's Goal 2, where you said you're transferring music to VAPA?
Yes, because of Prop 28, one of the funding requirements is that supplant rule. Prop 28 basically says in a nutshell, we can't... Prop 28 basically says in a nutshell, we cannot access the Prop 28 funds until we have expended everything that the district has set out to expand or what we've spent last year. So for example, if we have a unfilled music position, we can't access the Prop 28 funds until we've filled all those music positions. And so in fact, it ties our hands in spending the money from Prop 28 until we have spent what we've spent the year prior. And so by making it VAPA, it allows for those situations where we can't find a teacher due to the, just can't find teachers to fill the positions. It gives the sites those flexibilities of hiring other teachers which will meet our obligation and allow all the sites in the district to access our Prop 28 funds. Did I say that right, Jennifer?
I have one question, which is on page ten. I'm just trying to figure out, on page ten notes the difference of what we spent and what was budgeted for twenty-three twenty-four. There's about a four point two million dollar difference between what we spent.
Yes.
I would think that that would be sizable in terms of the budget, overall budget, since it's only a thirty million dollar budget. Where do we not spend on services?
I think some of it was in facilities, if I'm not mistaken. Some of it is that we had a couple of position, well, let me rephrase that. Remember when we do the LCAP, it's what we expect to spend, it's budgeted. And there are cases in which we didn't spend as much as we had planned to spend. For example, one of the lines, I'm just going to go for the first one, is teacher professional development. We set aside twenty-four hours for teachers. If not all the teachers access that twenty-four hours, we're not going to spend all that money. So those things happen. If facilities, I want to say we didn't spend all that was, I think that was a large part of it.
I just want to make sure that the four point two million wasn't reduction in quality of services.
No, it was not.
And if it's facility, then what facility did we do?
So the facility was a carryover from the prior year that we haven't spent yet, and that went towards the tracks.
Oh, okay, so it will eventually be spent.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
We need to open the public hearing if there are no other questions from the board. Are there any public comments on the LCAP from the folks here in the room? Well, the only question I have is, I hope we can do it all, because what you've outlined is pretty big. And so that, you know, my hope with all the above is the monitoring piece, which is always a challenge with when you're dealing with a lot of variables that may or may not line up the way you thought they would. But I know we're still short teachers, especially in music, and I know that's been very frustrating for everybody. But if there are no other questions from anyone in the room, then I close the public hearing. Thank you, Amy. Now we have the LCAP presentation from MCAA.
Hello. First I need to say, ooh, excuse me, first I need to apologize, the draft of the LCAP that went to everybody was missing goals two and three, so I have sent a corrected one to Amy. I didn't, somehow I clicked the boxes or unclicked the boxes to print it, and so that's been sent to Amy and it will be uploaded on our website, I think tomorrow. So at this point, there is a presentation, and then I will answer any questions that you have.
Hello and welcome to the Marysville Charter Academy for the Arts' initial presentation of our twenty-four twenty-five LCAP. We will start by looking at a budget overview. We have a total of four million five hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars in our local control funding formula, with a total of three hundred and eighty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars available in our supplemental and concentration grant. Last school year, we had budgeted five hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars for LCAP. We spent three hundred and forty thousand six hundred and sixty-two through the LCAP, leaving a hundred and seventy-three thousand thirty-eight unspent. However, we did expense that amount and more utilizing some expiring grants and the current grants, such as the S for Three, the A through G completion grant, and the Arts Music Instructional Materials Block Grant. We have lots to be happy about to celebrate successes from the last year. We were again awarded a California Distinguished School Honor. We were a California Honor Roll School. We were the number one ranked high school in the Yuba Sutter area based on U.S. News and World Report, and we earned an America's Best High Schools distinction for 2023, also from U.S. News and World Report. We had the local regional winner for Poetry Out Loud, who went on to compete at the state level. We had Rotary and Lions Club speech competition winners, one of whom went on to earn over fifty-five hundred dollars in scholarships. We've had multiple band, orchestra, and choir awards throughout the year. We had an art student receive the Congressional Art Competition Runner-Up this year. Four of our art students were selected for the Kingsley Art Competition at the Crocker Art Museum, and one student's art was selected and turned into a billboard in Florida. It was an international juried competition. We also put on three successful plays this year, Much Ado About Nothing, Bugsy Malone, and Mean Girls. We put on a photo and art gallery show locally. We held two dance showcases. Our students competed in the Northern California Scholastic Art and Writing Awards Competition. We had over one hundred recognitions. Fourteen students received recognitions for writing and forty-one students for art. Many of those students had multiple entries, and we had two students that were American Visions winners, which means that they went on to compete at the national level. Through surveys, we have identified some needs that our community is telling us they would like us to address. First is a consistent performance venue. Second is continued after-school tutoring, specifically in math. Third is increased socio-emotional learning, social emotional learning, excuse me, curriculum and counseling, et cetera. Fourth is after-school offerings, trying to find some enrichments for students after school that they cannot fit into their day. And finally, continued support for the arts. Our first goal is to provide learning opportunities that result in increased academic achievement and ensure quality classroom instruction for all students, including support systems that meet the needs of targeted populations. Our actions to meet this are IXL, which is a math program, hiring a retired teacher to come in and work alongside our math teachers to help students with in-class interventions, after-school tutoring, classroom supplies and equipment, paraeducators, professional development, the UWorld AP College Prep Resource, teachers on special assignment, ninth block intervention, purchasing a reading diagnostic universal screener, UC Scout, which is a program that will allow our students to take some UC-approved A through G courses online, and summer school. Moving on to goal two, we would like to continue to support the visual and performing arts in order to engage students, expand artistic and academic opportunities, and develop career-related skills. Some actions under this goal are purchasing visual arts supplies, continuing our seventh grade exploratory arts wheel, maintaining the music and arts teachers that have been added over the past three years, continuing to fund our dance instructor, productions and events, and then looking at and bolstering our CTE and career pathways. Also, instrument repair, maintenance, and purchases, introducing a senior seminar class for all seniors, refining the seventh grade study skills curriculum, purchasing some study hall supplementary materials such as planners and some supplementary resources such as books on goal setting, and after-school enrichment. This would take care of personnel costs as well as supplies. Goal three is to support students' health and well-being through SEL curriculum, personnel, and other actions. And our actions under this are continuing to fund our full-time school counselor, continuing to fund two outreach consultants, continuing to purchase SEL curriculum, continuing to find motivational speakers and culturally diverse field trips and other experiences for our students, class meetings, link crew, rallies, and other things that will bring the students together and help build a sense of belonging and a sense of school spirit, and leadership opportunities after school. All of our documents are available on our website along with much more information like the complete draft of the LCAP, and that is at charter dot NJUSD dot com. And at this point, I would like to thank you for listening to our presentation.
Very good presentation. Are there any questions from the board? I guess we want to open the public hearing, and then we'll ask board members if they have any comments. Any comments from the board?
Eric, congratulations.
Thank you. All of those awards, though, I have to say again, that was earned last school year, not this school year. So that's on the back of James Lowman and all of the staff and students who were there then. I just get to experience the joy of hearing we won them.
Very cool. I have a couple of questions. Which, what positions did you hire using Prop 28 funds?
We haven't, we have not expensed any Prop 28 monies. Yeah.
What are you planning?
Good question. Our plans are, excuse me, our teachers have gotten together, our drama teacher, our arts, visual arts teachers, and our dance teacher, and our music teachers, and have kind of crafted what they would like. And so we are creating, our plan is to purchase kind of big-ticket items for each of those four core areas, kind of on a, oops, on a rotation. And so we haven't spent anything this year, so next year we're looking at some of the things that are being requested. Glenn Weisberger would like to purchase a Rizzo machine to be able to do some printmaking with the students. Glenn, not Glenn, that was Lynn. Matt Demerit has requested some things to help the drama productions, whether it be lights, which we just purchased, so that got knocked out without spending Prop 28. Dance is looking at bolstering and including or expanding our Ballet Fugloryco that we started this year. And then in music, I know one thing we're looking forward to in the next couple of years is actually adding a mariachi class to our curriculum during the day. And so there's, they all have kind of specialized things that they're wanting, and so we're looking at, as Amy mentioned, having to match everything we've spent, which is going to be rough because we've spent a lot, and so hopefully we'll be able to do that.
I have another question. You have the eight block schedule at MCAA. How much does it contribute to becoming an award-winning school for your program?
You know, I wish I could answer that completely honestly.
And I should have given you time to think about it before I asked the question in public.
I know what it does is it provides students opportunity. It allows them to take more classes than they would in a traditional six or seven-period schedule, but it doesn't come without some challenges. You know, like they see the students, or the students see the teachers every other day, and so for students struggling in math, it's very difficult because math needs consistency, and they don't get that. So that's why you see so much focus on math up there. There are some other things that I think make it kind of difficult, but I, I love it. I don't know, I haven't been in high school, it's been a long time. I left the high school world in two thousand and seven as a vice principal, and so it's been a long time since I've been back, but I know our students have a greater opportunity to take classes. Yeah.
Are there any questions from the board?
Got one more question for you. I know that looking for a venue has been something for years now. Any updates on that arena?
No, I know this year we were travelers. We did one show here in the South Auditorium. We did two shows at the state, or the, excuse me, the old Sutter Theater in Yuba City. We did a dance showcase here at the South Auditorium, and we did one at McKinney. And we've done, excuse me, we did our fall music in the Southod, and we did our spring music week in the Marysville Gym. And so the feedback I've gotten is it's very hard to travel, especially to Yuba City. It was great to work with the Sutter Theater, and we love the fact that they were willing to work with us, but the kids had to leave from classes early to get to practices, that messes up transportation, they're losing instructional time if they're not in drama that block. And so I wish I could say there's a light at the end of the tunnel, but there's not. I do know our dance program, and you saw we're funding our dance teacher, who is amazing, through that, throughout the LCAP, our dance program has outgrown the Southod. So even if we wanted to have it there, we can't. We have a hundred and twenty-five, we had a hundred and twenty-five dancers this year who participated, and so that's a quarter of the school. They can't fit, they don't, they never fit whole stage, but it was just like this in the fall. In the spring at McKinney, they actually did, like, everyone, and it was a huge to-do. It was beautiful, but no. I would love to help, yeah. We have a committee set up next year with, based off of WASP, the WASP review. Two years ago, we've broken up everybody into committees for next school year, and we have, excuse me, one of those is a venue, and we have some parents who are really kind of chomping at the bit to help us figure it out. So we're hoping that by this time next year, we'll have more answers.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Yes, I got just one more, sorry. First of all, congratulations on all your awards. I just needed a little bit of clarification on goal two, I was a little confused.
Okay.
You had mentioned some, developing some career-related skills. Is that in reference to your allocations of forty thousand for CTE and career pathways?
Correct.
Can you elaborate as how that, what does that mean?
What are we trying to do with that? Yeah, great question. We have right now, we have our drama teacher is CTE credentialed, our, one of our music teachers is CTE credentialed, our dance teacher is PE and CTE credentialed. Then we have another music teacher who is working on his application, a visual arts teacher who just, Monday I got an email from her and from Sutter County saying that she has the preliminary. So the goal is to get as many of our teachers that we can CTE credentialed so that we can increase the number of courses that we have offering for them and create more CTE pathways.
Also, you mentioned a dance instructor, is, did I read this right? It's a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars?
That's including salary benefits, everything, yes.
I'm in the, oh, you can't dance, but this is, that's a good figure. Thank you.
Are there any questions? This is a public hearing. Are there any other questions in the room for Eric? Well, I have sat through a number of your reviews, and unfortunately I haven't seen enough of your drama and your music. I gotta do that better this year. But you and your staff are incredible, and the handoff between you and Mr. Lowman has been seamless, and I think it's because of collaboration that is there. And you're the new team captain, and it seems like you've got the ball and you're running with it.
We have, as I mentioned a minute ago, we have an amazing staff. We have some of the, I know all of our teachers in the district are hardworking, but we have some really hardworking teachers. And so the, everything that happens there is a testament to those teachers, to those students and the parents. I just get to kind of help facilitate, so, yeah. Thank you for your kind words.
Thank you for everything you do, and please express our appreciation to your staff.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Now we have eighteen point three. Now we have 18.3 approved the annual report for the Proposition 28 for the Marysville Joint Unified School District for the 24, 25 school year. Amy?
Hi. So Prop 28, this is our first year we received funds. Part of the requirements of Prop 28 is that the board has to be annually updated on what was spent, how many students were served. So if we remember earlier when we talked Prop 28, we said that we can't access the funds until we've met all of our, what we've paid for the year prior. So we're, our first year into Prop 28, and you now have the first report, annual report, that needs to be approved by the board. And what this report shows is that we, we did have a little bit of funding. I don't know the exact amount, but we had a little bit of funding that we did access through Prop 28. It was very minor. It was mostly in our secondary schools. So when we look at it, we did not hire any new teachers last year. We did not hire any classified staff last year. We don't have any teaching aides. The number of students served, this would have been through the supplies, the 20% of Prop 28 that's allowed for supplies. We served about 1,200 students. The number of sites that accessed the, the funding was five. And we have that it's going to be approved tonight. This will live on our district website as required by edcode. And we will do this as yearly. So I'm asking for you to approve the annual report on Prop 28.
Are there any questions for Amy?
Amy, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand the surplanting rule. So is that year over year, or is that just the starting year?
So when, one of the things we did is that we, we had to see how we had to report. And so when we got our documents to fill out for the reporting for the state accountability of this, is it very clearly said the amount of money that the district spent the year prior, that is the baseline. We can't access Prop 28 funds until we've met that fiscal amount. And so what we had to do is we went in and we looked at not only all of our music teachers, but we also had to look at our art teachers, graphic designs, anything theater, drama. All of our teachers that are part of the arts, we had to include all of their salaries and benefits as well as the money that was spent at the district level through the LCAP, had to be added into that mix. And once we've met that threshold, then we can start accessing Prop 28.
So, but is, is there, does that rule apply year over year?
Year over year.
Okay. So just for a very high-level question, how much is it on top of what's Prop 28? Just to get a good understanding of how, how, how large of an expansion are we talking about in our arts program?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Meaning that we have a baseline, right?
Yes.
We know how much Prop 28 money is.
Yes.
Add those two numbers together. Divide by the original number.
Yeah, I don't have that number on hand. We could get that for you.
Yeah, we can get that for you. I don't know what we spent total outside of Prop 28. I know Prop 28 is around 1.3 million total, but we could get that number for you. I know we have it.
Any other questions for Amy from the board? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Yang. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries. It's passed. Motion carries. Now we're at 18.4. Approve the annual report for Proposition 28 for Marysville Charter Academy for the Arts for the 2024-25 school year. Eric?
All right. Hello again. My page is pretty blank. Everything is zero because we spent nothing on our Prop 28. We have a little bit different than the district does. Everybody else who has a district or a school that has over 500 students has to spend 80% on personnel and 20% on others. If you have fewer than 500 students, you don't have to, as a district, as an LEA, which I count as my own LEA, we don't have to spend it on personnel. So that's why when I talked about our big-ticket items, we have that luxury. And our plan is to do, what's written in the plan is a risograph machine for visual arts to work with printmaking, stage flats, props, guest teachers for the drama program, costumes, guest teachers for the dance program, and additional instruments and guest teachers, conductors for the music program. So that's kind of what they've all asked for. But our expenditure over the last year has been zero.
So what are you planning on spending on the 24, 25?
We will hit these items and try to target. If, I, I haven't gotten a price yet because I knew we couldn't spend it. And so for the risograph, we will work on getting correct. We will look at prices for that. We kind of know what we have spent on supplemental contracts for dance choreographers to come in, for vocal performers to come in, for guest conductors, so we can kind of look at all of that, and that will be part of our Prop 28. Once we've spent the, met that threshold. And we do have three years to spend, you know, all of that money. Each year's allocation, you have up to three years to spend. So.
Any questions from the board for Eric? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Gary Krittl. Do I hear a second? Second by Allison Hasty. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Eric. Now we're at 18.5. Approve the addendum with Procare/Blazer Works for Speech, Language Therapy, Occupational Therapy, Certified Occupational Therapy Assistant, and Registered Nurse Services for the 24, 25 school year.
Mr. Davis, those, I'm taking this one for Ms. Matthews. Those positions there are to help us meet our obligation for IEP requirements for students throughout the district. Obviously, they are for positions that we have been unable to fill like most of the state. And if approved that amount, if we don't expand the amount in its entirety, then the monies remain with us. We'll be able to then put them forth for services for the coming year. So this allows us some of that flexibility for those services for the 24, 25 school year.
So at this time, this is an estimate for what?
It's our very best estimate based on what our needs are right now. And in the event that we have a few additional students come forward, we think that we're going to be able to satisfy it as well without, without having to come back in the future with a, with a ratified.
So what we're hoping is it comes in at least no more than that.
Yeah, I can, I'll just say tongue-in-cheek, if Mr. Jordan is able to perform his duties as our newly appointed assistant superintendent and find these teachers from who knows where in heaven, then we'll be able to do away with this and of course, save our district a little bit of money.
Any questions for the board?
Just to understand the amount of pressure that is on Mr. Jordan here is what's the, what's the difference between us hiring somebody versus the nine FTEs, right? Because I'm looking at here, it's, it's nine FTEs, right, for 1.46 million? What's the additional variance for going through here as opposed to just direct hiring? And do we feel confident that we're going to be able to fill these positions by the end of, of the academic year?
It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's not likely. These aren't for teachers, but these are for like speech and language therapists, occupational therapist assistants, registered nurses. And so, I mean, the whole state is clamoring for these. We've had positions open all this year. So I think there's some likelihood that we will have some positions unfilled, which is then why we need the contract with Procare.
Through Chico State or UMass that we're currently working with, that would help. I don't know. That would help in that recruiting efforts.
Any other questions concerning this?
And we did just hire an OT and occupational therapist, and so that's a savings to the district. So we will continue to, to try.
Are there any other questions from the board? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Allison Hasty. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're at 19.1. Approve the Teacher Residency Implementation and Expansion Grant for the 424, 23 through the 630, 26 school years.
So as we were talking about earlier, this is exactly what I'm saying, is for an additional $400,000 to the grant to bring in new student teachers. We've been using UMass. We'll continue to do so. I've spoken with Chico State, and we're in the process of working with a partnership with Chico State as well to get those positions filled. This grant is specific to special ed, single-subject credentialing areas, which certainly there's a need at all levels, but the special ed certainly is a very large need. So anticipate this helping and having a partnership with as many, you know, teaching institutions as you can have is always a benefit to the district.
So how many people, how many teachers would be, be looking to get through this program?
So my understanding is we have additional funding from the UMass and then add this 400,000 to this. Really, depending on how we break it down, I want to say, I think UMass was 40,000 or less, was 40,000. So it'd be about 10 teachers. We certainly can work on that. So we have through 2026 in order to spend that. So we do have additional monies that are restricted to this type of thing, which is good. It's a good challenge to have, if you will.
Is this where we're working with Sac State and Chico State?
So right now, UMass, and we're in the process of working with Chico State. I've had those conversations, but obviously, we're waiting for board approval on this grant to move forward with that. So we could work with Sac State. You can work with local universities as well. So it's not just, you know, specific to UMass or to Chico State.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board for Mr. Reeves? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Doug Krittl. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry? Oh, here, okay. He's, he's what? Oh, okay. All right. We have one abstention. But motion carries. We're at 19.2. Approve the job description and position of Executive Director of Personnel.
So as discussed earlier, bringing on additional person, not really an additional person, we're replacing a full-time FTE, a .6, and a contract administrator for special projects into the Personnel Department.
Are there any questions from the board? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Allison Hasty. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're at 19.3. Approve the job description and position of the Executive Director of Educational Services.
So with retirement of J Trio, we're not filling that position. And the elevation of Amy into that role is the job description for Executive Director, and we would not seek a director position as well.
Are there any questions for Mr. Reeves? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Yang. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're at 20.1. Presentation and public hearing for the 2024-25 Proposed Adopted Budget. Jennifer? Okay, we're going to open the public hearing during the presentation. So if you have anybody that has any questions, hold them until the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, President Davis, fellow trustees, Dr. Osirani, cabinet members, and our MJUSD community. I'm here tonight to present to you the proposed budget for the 24, 25 school year. During this presentation, I'm going to go over our budget cycle. The governors may revision. Also, along with that is the Prop 98 deal that was made a couple of weeks after, and that impact on the state budget will have on our district. I'll also go over our general fund, revenues and expenditures, our multi-year projections, and then what's ahead of us. So you see this every time I come up here to present. This is the reporting cycle, and it works hand-in-hand with the LCAP. And so right now, we're here in June, giving the presentation for next year's budget. Hopefully, it'll be enacted July 1st. Then in August, any changes the state may have made or the legislation, we'll come back to you in August. September, we'll go back to 23, 24 and present the books closed. And then we'll come back in December. And then again in March, just to give you interim reports for the 24, 25 year. And we'll start hearing about the 25, 26 budget year in January. So back in the middle of May, Governor Newsom came forward with his May revise from his January proposal. Not a lot changed. He still has a deficit of 26, 27.6 billion to the state budget. But the COLA came back a little higher at 1.07%. He is still trying to protect our educational programs. And he is still looking to address an 8.8 billion accounting shift, creative accounting. And then he's planning to deplete the 8.4 billion in our public school system, our rainy day account. It really, the governor's May revision relies significantly on one-time dollars to keep funding our ongoing problems. Programs. That was, programs. A couple of weeks after the May revise, he did strike a deal with our California Teachers Association. He's still, he kind of changes that maneuver of the 8.8 billion shortfall. He addressed the legal concerns that came with that maneuver. And then he still maintains our educational programs at the current levels for 23, 24, and 24, 25. And the statutory COLA stays at 1.07. And hopefully, we're still going to spend down those reserves. But, and we may look at some deferrals from June to July, but they're predicting not much impact on the schools. So for Marysville Joint Unified, what does that mean for our LCFF? You heard Amy talking about the LCFF, and it drives our LCAP. The LCFF per ADA funding projected for 24, 25 is 14,189 per ADA. And as a reminder, ADA is our average daily attendance. And then our projected ADA, that's multiplied by the 9,425 ADA that we're projecting for about $133.7 million. It's a little different. You'll see 131.7 million in our SACs documents in that big pink or white booklet you received. And that's an accounting thing where 2 million of it is transferred to our deferred maintenance and it's reflected in revenues and not expenditures. So here's a quick summary of our general funds. When we report out for our proposed budget, we also look at where we think we're going to end and close the year for 2324. So for our total revenues from this year, 2324 to next year, we are looking at a decrease of about $38.3 million. And that's due to the federal COVID relief dollars. So those funds are going away. We have to spend them by the end of this year. And so that decreases our revenue. That's the main 34 million of it. This is another graph that I've been showing repeatedly during my presentations and it's the graph of our one-time dollars and they're coming to an end. Those green squares are coming to an end this year in 2024. And then it reflects in the blue squares, the three block grants to bridge that cliff of one-time dollars. So as you can see in this pie chart, these are our general fund revenues. 74% of our revenues come from the LCFF that's generated by our ADA. So for expenditures, it's the same graph. I'm going to compare our estimated actuals for this year of 2324 to the 2425 projections. We do see a decrease of about 65 million and that's largely due to the capital outlay, those big projects that were funded with the COVID relief funds and also those one-time dollars going away. And here's a pie graph of our expenditures. You can see that 78% of our expenditures are for salaries and benefits. That's pretty typical. We're a people business, so most of our money will go to salaries and benefits. So here it is combined. It takes the total general fund, which is our unrestricted and restricted dollars. And as a reminder, our unrestricted dollars really is our operational budget, restricted our grants, categorical monies we receive for a specific purpose. So you can see the same numbers that we had in the prior slides for revenues and expenditures, but here you can see the increase or decrease to our fund balance. So for estimated actuals, it's a $35 million decrease or deficit spending that brings our ending fund balance down to 52.8 million. That carries over into the next year, but we also are deficit spending for 2425 at 8.6 million, meaning that we're spending more than we're bringing in. So that brings us down to a projected 44 million in ending fund balance. The components of the ending fund balance, which are below that gray line up there, are really, that's, the ending fund balance is our savings, it's our reserves. So what's in there? We have some money that's restricted, we have some money committed, and we have our non-spendables, which is our petty cash and our inventory, our warehouse stock. Then we have some assigned and then we have that 3% that we must meet. It's mandated by the state reserve for economic uncertainty at 7.5 million for this year and 5.6 million. And that's 3% of our expenditures. So as our expenditures go down from year to year, that REU changes. So for the total fund balance versus expenditures for our combined unrestricted, restricted, we're looking at a 21% reserve percentage for this year and 23% for next year. But for our unrestricted, which is our operational budget, we're looking at 10% now and going down, decreasing to 8% for next year. So this next section is our multi-year projections and this is required by state law. It's prepared for the current year, which will be 2425 and then the out, the out, two years out. And we use this to plan for our spending. So you can see here, this is what we use to project when we're looking and we're making assumptions, what's the revenue we're going to receive and what are we going to spend? We use the COLA, we use our projected ADA, and then we have some other minor revenues that come in through lottery, our universal transitional kindergarten and the mandated block grant. Then for our expenditures, we look at the current STIRS and PERS employer rates, our unemployment rate and our step-in column costs. So this is a recap of our multi-year for both unrestricted and restricted. And you can see that we are continuing to, oops, let me go back. We're continuing to deficit spend in the out years. It does decrease a little as the revenue increases and the expenditures decrease a little bit. So it's very similar to the last slide I just showed with the estimated actuals and the projections. And you can see our unrestricted reserve, that bottom line decreases from 10%, 6% to 3%. So we have some big decisions and some adjustments we need to start looking at and making. So here's a little recap of our historical ending fund balance. If you look at the 2021 year, you can see that we had in our unrestricted, that dark gray line, our operational budget, 51.9 million when we closed the year. We're projecting for 2324 to decrease that to 22 million. It's about a $30 million decrease. So in the 2021 to 2324 year, we, as I just said, we decreased by $30 million in that reserves and our savings. And what makes that up? Well, we received about 29 million more in LCFF dollars, but we've spent 59 million. And I broke it down into the categories. You can see we spent in salary and benefits, 27.5 million, books, supplies, services and operations, 6.6 million more, capital outlay, 11.3, transfers and outgo, 3.1, and our special education costs, 7.8 million more, and our routine restricted maintenance, 1.8. And a note for the routine restricted maintenance, that's required by the state, that 3% of our expenditures goes into our routine restricted maintenance account to be used for facilities to keep them in good repair. So here's just a recap by each category. So for the 27.5 million increase in salary and benefits, we, 4.8, went to our increase for salaries in 2122, a 5% increase. In 2223, there was a 9.57 salaries at 7% and our health and benefit cap increase of a 2.57 for a $9.7 million cost. And then we've included, then we've also added 132.5 for FTE in our unrestricted operational budget. And I'm not going to read each line, but you can see there, I broke it down by certificated employees and classified employees. And here are the other operations of running it, books, supplies and operations, books and supplies, we increased 3.4, operations 3.2. And then our capital outlay and other outgo is about 15.3 million increase and that's for our high school trucks, our buses we purchased. We have also an increase in our COP payments came, started coming due during this time period. And then we transferred $8 million for the Kovalod building project out to Fund 40. Then there, again, is a 7.8 million for special ed and 1.8 million increase. Now, all of these increases were to help support students coming out of COVID. So I'm sitting up here, I'm talking to you about the deficit spending and we have some hard decisions to start making and cutting back, but I'm also going to ask you on the 25th to adopt this budget with a positive certification because overall, our total general fund is still healthy reserves, but we want to keep it that way. So, so for the road ahead, as I said, we want to keep our healthy balance. So back, we're going to start budget planning for 2526 in September and we'll be back here, you know, as I said earlier, in August for the 45-day revise. We'll close our books, present in September, and then we'll start our budget planning and then come back in December with an update for the 2425 first interim. I just want to say before I take questions, I want to thank the fiscal department, all our departments. It's a lot of work putting the budget together and maintaining all those budget entries. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for all their hard work.
Well, thank you, Jennifer. I know that's a lot of numbers to keep track of. Are there any questions from the board?
Jennifer, I want a simplistic explanation as much as possible. I'm looking at page 17, so scroll to page 17. Because it's the summary of why we're deficit spending, right? So effectively, the deficit spending is because, and it tells us, there's a $30 million decrease in the unrestricted fund balance, right? And so it's clear that the expenditure was 59 million and our revenue was only 29 million, right? And so what I, I'm trying to understand here is a lot of that extra increase, am I correct? Is that COVID money?
I'm sorry, is that from what?
That COVID money, one-time fund? Or is that from a different funding source?
It's not from COVID because the COVID money was in our restricted column.
Okay, so what, what makes up for that 30 million decrease in funding?
Well, we added a lot of positions.
Sorry, at the, on the, the funding side, not on the...
Oh, on the funding side, the $30 million increase?
Yeah, so there's a decrease in 30 million, right? At line two.
Right.
So what, what caused $30 million decrease in revenue?
The increase in revenue comes from increased ADA. We've been working hard...
No, decrease, right? Because...
Well, our revenue did not decrease, our spending increased.
Our spending increased?
Yes.
Okay, so, so if our spending increased by 30 million, right?
Yes.
It went to salary and benefits, right?
Yes.
27.5, right? So, so of the 59 million of spending, right? I'm just trying to understand the math here.
Yeah.
If there, our spending increased 30, and that's why I, I, I reference 2019, right? So this is 2020 to 2023. If that's true, is that safe to say that between, that after 2019, we increased 30 million in spending? Is that a safe sentence to say?
After 2019, is that what's the question?
Correct, because this 20, if you look at first line, 2020 to 2021, that's, and then 23 to 24. So that's the years that we're currently sitting in.
This, this slide right?
Correct.
This slide right here, okay.
So those, these are, these are, I'm just trying to understand where the money came in and where the money came out. So if the money that came in was not COVID money and the restricted money, that, that, right?
I understand what you're asking. So this doesn't represent the money that came in for COVID, but we did have savings, right? Because we received so much COVID money, it, it released, it relieved the unrestricted side because we were spending the restricted side. So it, so we had more reserves, we had more savings there.
Yes, but that doesn't, so what, so the question on that would be is then, because we're spending 30 million over what our revenues were, then, am I safe to also say is that if you look at that breakout, right? These breakouts represents that 59 million, right? And, and that 59 million is the, if you difference that 30 million, that 30 million is the excess spending that we've been spending in order to have this deficit budget?
Yes.
Okay, so, so if I understand that correctly, right? So nice round numbers, right? If I round that 59 million to 60 million, what we're talking about is almost half of it came out of salary and benefits.
Correct.
And then 6.6 million came out of, which is about 10%, right?
Yes.
Came out of books, supplies and services, capital outlay. So it's stuff we spent on our facilities, we're talking about 1/6, right, of the budget went to capital outlay. So I'm just trying to understand the ratios between it and if we assume that all of, and it's 30 million out of that 60 million, that's one half of the budget. So we, we spent more than one half of it. What we're saying then is that if we cut it across proportionally, salary and benefits has to be cut in half.
Yes.
Books and supplies have to be cut in half. A capital outlay has to be cut in half, right? And so if I understand the math correctly, that's what I'm trying to, trying to work out.
Yes, yes. Capital outlay has been removed. It's a one-time expense, so we won't have that anymore. So that'll automatically decrease.
But is that, is that general premise correct?
Yes.
You are right. I'd like to draw your attention to the next slide, number 18. And I think this lays out some of the questions you're asking on the, on the funding where the expenditure goes up. We talk about people, we talk about where we've added the people. I think Jennifer talked about the fact we came out of COVID. We added additional assistant principals at elementary schools. We added, we already had ORCs, we had open positions, we filled them. We added health aides that unfortunately, that was COVID funding that had to be eliminated. If we didn't eliminate that, that would be added to this expenditure. We also added, I know I added, wellness paras for every site. Because wellness was such an issue, discipline is such an issue, holding kids in classrooms, suspension started going up, we had to put a child in a place where they wouldn't be in the office. Some of the thinking, as you can see in the total there, it was at the site level. But that's what was needed after COVID. So that's, that, that is where the expenditure is our point.
Yeah, I was going to link to that. If you flip to page 18, it explains that 27.5 million, right? So, so we have an additional 132 FTEs that contributed to that 27.5 million.
Yes.
So, so if my, my premise is correct, that budget has to be slashed by half, we're talking about 70 positions.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
I am hearing some whispers. We've already cut about 4.5 district-level administrators. We've already cut some support staff. But what we cannot cut, and I think the increases you're seeing, is a number of students in our special ed increase. The class sizes in special ed is restricted on the CBA language. It also comes with paraprofessionals. Kindergarten, UPK, Universal Kindergarten or TK is now, the governor is insisting that he is going to maintain the class size of 10 to 1. It is going to go down.
Yes, as of the May revise for '26.
'26, '27, so we are going to maintain some of those positions.
Or '25, '26, rather.
25, '26. So some of those that where we added, we just can't cut because of some of the mandates. Special ed is our most expensive program. It is rising.
I, I still have additional questions.
Okay.
Which is, let's hold to the premise that we have to reduce that spending by half. Is the, is the count of the position, certificate and classified, true to what it is, right? So I'm looking at, at it. How many of these are at the district level? Because I'm looking at this and the only thing I see that is district is that .22 FTE.
Well, yeah, that's a man...
Or is these mostly site level?
So it's, it's a mixture, right? We have a lot of site added. We also have pupil services, which would be essential. It's not necessarily the district nurses, they, they serve more than just one site. We have counselors that serve, I think right now, we have elementary counselors at every site. The paras are going, there are a lot of added paras. Classified sites, right there, 38.02 FTE. So I mean, it's...
Yeah, but am I safe to say that, for example, the classified, the bulk of those classifieds are site level?
Yes, yes.
If you, if you look at...
So I can easily add these numbers up. It's 38 plus 36, right, plus 15. So that's four and two, so that's six. So that's about 90 individuals. And if it's in half, that's 45 individuals removed from the sites, from 23 sites.
Yes.
Is that a fair assessment of the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd also like to point out that 7.8 million I talked about with special ed is also connected to that pro care that you just approved. We don't have speech therapists, we can't get occupational therapists, nurses. All that comes at a higher cost than hiring, you know, so...
Yeah, I agree. That's why I asked about the premium, right?
Yeah.
The challenge to Jordan would be is, there's a premium.
Right.
Right? If we can address that premium, there's more room for more services for our students, right? Because at the end of the day, I would also agree that, that these individuals are providing services to our student, right?
Yes.
But if you don't have money, you don't have money, right?
Jennifer?
Yes.
I think Dr. Yang asked a question.
Okay.
He asked a specific question about management at district level. Could you please clarify the line that he asked about?
Well, the district, for the district level, for management?
Let's second the district, please. It's clearly stated, but just explain what the three point...
It comes out to a net .22 FTE of additional for the unrestricted. For unrestricted, yeah. This is strictly, yeah.
So this is, this is a public hearing. There's no vote tonight. So the, the... So the, the discussion is open. Does anybody else have a question or concern for Jennifer? I see Angela Stiegel. Please introduce yourself.
I would imagine you're shocked and stunned. Angela Stiegel, I am still the president for the teachers' union. A couple of things. One, I just have a quick question. So the 6.6 million in books and supplies, 3.4 million is listed as books and supplies itself, and then 3.2 million is operations, right? I was jotting stuff down quickly, so. Right, there we go. So then, out of the 3.5 million, do we have any idea how much of that is spent on curriculum and books for our students? Because we haven't had an adoption in any of the year span that this was.
So Amy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this doesn't, curriculum comes out of our restricted. We have an instructional materials account, so this is not, the curriculum mostly, unless it's in the LCAP, will come from that restricted account. So that's not included.
And so that was my assumption. So then the 3.5 million, would it be safe to say that at least the majority of that in general terms is more than likely supplies?
Yes. Okay, I would say supplies, which includes Chromebooks and small equipment, printers, all that other stuff, not just pens and pencils and paper.
Got it. So then on the operations end of things, I see where it says professional consulting. At least I assume that's what the prof is short for, is professional consulting. Is that where we would find the half a million dollars in legal fees? Or is that in a different category, do we know?
So it is, it's actually short for professional services and consulting. And yes, legal falls under professional services.
So then is that we're also all of our consultants, including all of the speech therapists, the nurses and all that, that we have to do these very inflated contracts for because we can't find those people? Are all those consultants under that or the vast majority of?
It's kind of convoluted, yes and no. So it, we make a contribution to the special education, that 7.8 million increase in contributions. And all of those items for speech live in that restricting side of the general fund budget. So this is the actual expenditures for unrestricted.
Okay. So then, as far as communications, is that possibly where, is that where like the Ares Communication and Catapult and that kind of stuff, is that what comes out of that?
Yes.
Does Sapphire come out of that?
It, it would come out of, yes, the operations somewhere because that, in the budget speak, 5,000 is the object code that we put all of those types of expenditures in. The operations, the books and supplies are our 4,000, so it would, yes, come out of the fives.
Okay, so then, as far as the numbers in regards to the staffing here at the district office and the point something FTE is all that has increased here? Has anybody looked at the phone directory for the DO lately? Because in two and a half years' time, we've gone from having 73 people on that phone directory to having 98 or 99. So I'm finding it hard to believe that we just have a 0.22 FTE. Or is that just out of this so that probably the rest of it--
So this is just unrestricted. So many of the positions we have here at the district are from ELOP or restricted dollars. So this is just our unrestricted.
Okay, and so then, I swear I'm trying to make this like simple. So the Director of Health and Wellness, is that out of this or is it out of the other?
It's out of restricted right now. And, and next year also.
Is that because we suddenly put it in LCAP?
Okay, hang on. This year we used Essar money. Amy, did we have it in the LCAP with unrestricted? For the Director of Wellness?
It is--
Okay. This current year, '23, '24, it is with restricted dollars. I'll have to verify for next year. I don't remember off the top of my head.
And--
So for these numbers, it's in restricting.
Okay. Do we have just even a ballpark figure what the Director of Health and Wellness is? I thought in the LCAP it was like $130,000 or something. Would that even seem to be in the--
It'd be in the ballpark and that's just not salary, that's also benefits included.
Okay. So instead of possibly the first knee-jerk reaction being to looking at cutting half of the certificated deal and that, maybe, I've already found a million dollars. We can get rid of a PR firm and some legal fees and a Director of Health amendment.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. Now we're going to move to public comments. We have four. Yes. Joshua Turnt, Turn, Fertato, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your name. If you want to repeat your name so it's, people can understand.
Not a problem. It's Joshua Fertato.
Thank you.
And I would like to discuss the cost of living increases that have been happening in the state of California. I've done a little bit of research and so I have some statistics for you. So personally, my rent in the last five years has gone from 750 to $1,050. That is an increase of approximately 20% or 7% per year multiplying. According to public rental data from, in 2019, average cost for a two-bedroom apartment was $1,192 and is now 1,428. That is an increase of 20% or an average of 3.6% increase. From 2023 to 2024 alone, it went from 1,239 to 1,428, which is an increase of 15% on rent. As for gas prices in the state of California, in 2019, the average is $3.91. As of today, the average is $4.91, which is an increase of 35%, which is 6.5% average increase on gas. From May of 2023 to May of 2024, it went from $4.64 to $4.91, which is an increase of My car insurance over the last five years has gone from $201.75 to $294.68. I have a perfect driving record and have had a perfect driving record for over 20 years. And yet my car insurance has still increased. This is an increase of 46% or an average of 8% per year increase. For food, according to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, food prices increase on average 3.3% each year. Each of these statistics that I have presented is higher than the amount that you are offering us this year for our cost of living increase. All of my expenses in total, including my student loans, comes to $3,025. I make and take home $3,200. That leaves almost no room for emergencies such as medical bills, car repairs, or an accident, or having to take off work. I hope you will take these statistics into consideration when going back to determining our increase for the year. Thank you for your time.
Our next public comment is Christina Garcia. Is she still here?
All right. Good evening, everyone. For those that don't know me, I am Christina Slay Garcia, Director of Music at Lunters High School. Finding the words to speak tonight has been incredibly difficult. However, one word keeps coming to mind: disappointed. I'm disappointed that for as hard as I have been working this year to bring positive PR to the district, that the district hasn't been there for me and my family. Both my husband and I are MJUSD employees. We give our time, our energy and our loyalty to MJUSD. And what has the district given us? First, it was a 0% offer, now a 2.25%. I don't know what the 8.25% COLA looks like as a number, but there is an item in the LCAP that has a $300,000 price tag that could be reevaluated if you need help finding funds. If you want the best for students, you have to take care of the teachers. In any other profession, if employees were to work without a contract, then you wouldn't have employees. Our teachers have gone an entire year without a contract. In that time, I have watched colleagues get physically harmed from students, heard stories of others being harmed or harassed by parents, and the superintendent gets a bonus because the suspension rates are down? Why is this okay in the eyes of our board? Finally, why do we have jobs being offered in interviews before current employees have been made aware of potential involuntary transfers? I have record of this happening multiple times in the last three weeks. Why are we treating teachers so poorly? Did this district, board, superintendent ever actually care about the human lives they are affecting? So I'm finally putting my emotions out there for all to see. I am disappointed, I am hurt, and I am angry, and I'm really hungry. I used to think the district cared about me, but the actions of the last few years have really shown me what value I provide. Zero, nothing, and that hurts. So I'm disappointed.
Thank you, Angela Stiegel. Did you want to come back up?
I'm not.
Okay. Last speaker then is James Carpenter.
Good evening. My concern tonight has to do with the first page of the packet you were all handed, the communications part in the middle of the page. I spent 18 years as a director for the Oliver's Public Utility District, so I have some idea of what it's like to sit in your seats. You are the bosses here. You run the show. Now, it's very easy to listen to the superintendent. For me, it was a general manager. That's the professional who knows what's going on, who's doing this job daily. However, if that's all you do, you don't have a function. There's no need to have you if all you're going to do is listen to him. Now, we have two former teachers up on the board. I'm sure you remember, as I do, at one point, we used to get a new contact list every time there was an election with new board members so we could contact our representatives. I looked at what we have now. If we go to the district website, there's a link and it takes us to a page with each one of you with an email that ends in MJUSD.com and a phone number that starts with 740-643-something. All of these go through the school district. This is not a way for your constituents to get ahold of you. According to this, and I'm going to assume that everything is correct, our superintendent can look at everything that goes to you through these sources. We deserve better. We should be able to get ahold of you without having to go through your employee. And that's what she is. She is your employee. She's our boss, everybody else here, but she is your employee. Thank you.
Finishing a term.
Ubassutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties.